Call this meeting of the common council to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Peachey? Miller?
Aye.
Right here.
Aye.
Lars?
Here.
Tully?
Here.
Crowe?
Sorry.
Horn?
Here.
Byer?
Here.
Alderman Peachey is excused this evening at this time. I will... Okay. And we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come to the podium and state your name and address and reason for appearing. Anyone? Okay. Okay. We have a nomination for the tourism committee. I'm suggesting the name of Amy Listel. Amy is a resident of Jefferson. She is also the director of the Jefferson County Fair Park and has been very active in working with us to help promote Jefferson. So I would ask for a motion and a second of approval.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved, seconded by Alderman Miller. On a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, to move on to resolution number eighty-two, tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Jefferson, resolution number eighty-two, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for March 3rd, 2020, is hereby adopted. Vouchers payable for February 2020 in the amounts of $209,585.84. Payroll summary for February 28th, 2020, in the amount of $165,085.76. Council minutes from February 18th, 2020 of the common council. There were no licenses approved tonight by the regulatory committee. And item number three, we did have an alcohol beverage license description change for Walmart, which will allow for online pickup outside at their new online pickup site. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Byer. Any discussion?
How does that, uh... Pickup work with the alcohol? I mean, did they come in?
Same as if you were in a checkout, they still... you're still required to have a ID.
And when they come out there to deliver your groceries and they will check your ID?
Yep.
They have to be of age also. Whoever's bringing it out has to be of age to serve it.
They meant to buy it. That's gonna confuse her a little bit.
It'd be like the checkout person has to be of age at the register, same person at the car.
I'm gonna have to get in my car.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name. Know if you're opposed.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Brandle?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Crowe?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution number eighty-three, a resolution authorizing and adopting an inspection and maintenance agreement for the Riverside Lofts Development Flood Protection Levy. Alderman Horn, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number eighty-three. Now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, herein approves and adopts an inspection and maintenance agreement between the Candice Street Lofts LLC and the city of Jefferson for the Riverside Lofts Development Flood Protection Levy, and further authorizes the city administrator to execute said agreement on behalf of the city of Jefferson. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Brandle. I'm gonna let Tim lead off with the explanation on this, and we're gonna welcome Tim Schlieper from Beerbecker Associates. Yeah, welcome, Tim.
Hi. Tim, you can sit there or wherever you want.
Whatever works best for you.
Whatever works, yeah. I figured it'd been a long day. So...
We got a sound.
Thanks.
I think... I think most of you know that, um... That the project is moving right along. In fact, it may be sometime by Memorial Day or shortly after Memorial Day, they may be asking for occupancy. Well ahead of where we normally thought that project would be done. You know, originally, when we got into it, we were thinking it's late fall of 2020 before that project is done. Now it's time to turn our attention to the process for making sure that the property is removed from the floodplain. That's complex. So Tim is here tonight to help, uh... Talk us through that. I will say that, uh... The agreement, uh... Or the resolution that Jim read, as well as the next resolution on the agenda, both speak to the same matter. There's two things that really we need to do. And generally, before I turn it over to you, Tim, I would say, um... The second resolution, uh... Basically allows, uh... The city to execute, uh... An emergency action plan and an operation and maintenance plan, uh... For the flood protection system that is at Candice Street. As you know, there's a combination, uh... Levy, sheet pile levy, and then earth and berm system that, um... Ultimately will allow the property to be removed from the floodplain. That's generally a good thing. To get FEMA to ultimately sign off, um... Both the owner and the city need approve this emergency action plan and operation and maintenance plan. I didn't make copies of this. It's really lengthy, but I'll pass it, uh... Along. Tim, maybe you can talk a little bit about what that really is.
Hi, I'm Tim Schlieper from Beerbecker. We, um... Put the, uh... Put the document together. We actually have been working with Gorman on this whole project to do the construction inspection for the levy wall. And we're responsible for doing the certification to FEMA that actually removes the property from the floodway and the floodplain. So yes, it's absolutely correct. It's a very complicated and lengthy process 'cause, uh... Your federal government moves at the federal government's speed. That's the way it works. So, to date, physically, the... There is a levy in place. Uh... It has check valves, it has an earthen wall, and it has a steel sheet pile wall. We've been out there. We've done the surveying. We did the construction inspection. It is built per the plan that FEMA originally approved, and they've given a conditional, like what's called a CLOMAR, Conditional Letter of MAP Amendment, or CLOMA. So, uh... At this point, effectively, this is down to the paperwork portion of the process. Part of that paperwork portion of the process is what you have before you tonight. Now, you've got two things before you. The first part we drafted with, and it's been back and forth between Gorman and the city, uh... Looking back and forth, and that is, there are certain things with regard to the levy that has to be maintained in order for it to be a flood wall and to be able to withstand flood pressures. You have to mow, uh... You have to do an annual inspections. You have to mow the berm. If there's something that's damaged, you have to repair it. Uh... There's also a little bit of equipment that has to be maintained. Um... There's a tractor that, uh... The city needs to maintain, and there's a pump that Gorman has purchased that has to be maintained. So there's certain items, and they're all spelled out in this operations and maintenance manual on exactly who... What has to happen to maintain the equipment and to maintain the levy system overall. And that... And those things have to be done to satisfy FEMA to say that, yes, the levy is being maintained and the floodway and the flood, uh... And the floodplain are still outside of this area. So that's really, uh... The first part is the costs for these inspections and for maintaining the equipment and how that gets borne, um... Out is in the first part of the agreement. The second part is the actual nuts and bolts of who's going to do what, um... With that. And, and part of this is, uh... For us, in order to send this all back to FEMA, uh... And say that, okay, it's built per our plan and the city, uh... Is accepting of it, uh... There has to be a resolution for the city to actually do that and enforce the flood, uh... Flood zone, effectively. So that's, that's kind of in a nutshell what's before you in these two resolutions. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
If I could, um... Just summarize the document that Jim is thumbing through, um... I would say that, um... The requirements for the city really are as follows. One, Bill primarily is gonna be responsible for conducting an annual inspection of the levy wall and primarily the earthen berm portion of this. Number two, if there is... If there ever is a critical incident down there, um... It really falls on the chief of police and myself to relocate residents out of that building. If there's some... How there's a breach of that levy system, um... I'm not overly concerned, uh... Quite honestly, if there's ever an issue down there, half the town will be underwater and the chief and I will be collecting animals and pears, quite frankly. Uh... Not to be too facetious about it, but that is true. And then the third thing that, um... I would say, um... Gorman has purchased a very large pump. Should there ever have to be a pumping operation, uh... Between basically the levy wall or earthen berm and the building, this large pump is operated with via power takeoff, basically. And a piece of equipment that our wastewater, uh... Utility has, um... That a large tractor is designated as the piece of equipment. So, kind of in a nutshell, that's what that agreement basically says in terms of the city's obligation. The second resolution, which is this agreement between the city and Gorman, you know, basically, um... Says that, um... Gorman owns the levy wall and the earthen berm, and that they're ultimately responsible to pay, um... If it has to be maintained, we have to do, per these guidelines of FEMA, we have to do the annual inspection. But that agreement says, you know, if it has to be maintained, it's Gorman's obligation to do it as the property owner, in a nutshell.
Correct.
I say that generally, summarize it fairly well, Chris.
And this... And again, um... If Gorman were to, um... Sell or transfer or sign their interest in the property, uh... Whoever would be the S and E would, uh... Be responsible for those costs.
Any questions?
Quite a bit of inspections required.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do in your free time?
Yeah, there is obligations that we have that we're... So...
It is that we do the inspections and all maintenance is done by Gorman?
And part of the reason for that is that the government won't... The government has to have another government and agency to get into this agreement where they don't do it with the private party. This is kind of a unique situation where there really is only one other private party that's benefited by the levy, but that's how they... How they act.
Tim, the... Tim, the last thing that the city at some point will have to do is, as I understand it, and quite honestly, we've never been through this process before, but once FEMA basically approves the LOMAR, the last step is the city needs to undertake an amendment of its floodplain management ordinance that recognizes the property removed from the Rock River floodplain. And that's an ordinance amendment. That's an ordinance that we regulate. But we can only do that after FEMA, as I understand it, signs off.
Yes. It's not official, even though they've agreed to the map as presented. They, they wanna go through that document as well as, uh... Check our record drawings of how it was constructed versus how we'd said it would be constructed, et cetera. So...
So I would say, at the end of the day, um... As far as Gorman's concerned, time is of the essence. You know, even if the project were to be done and the city would... Really can't give them occupancy until this happens. And, uh... So... I mean, I don't know how long this darn process is gonna take. It, it could delay Gorman from actually putting people in the building, uh... With, with... Via leases.
The unfortunate thing is they have a ninety-day window to respond to all this. And this is one of the things that they have to have in front of them before they will start that clock ticking. So, um... We don't think there's any reason why it should take that long. This is a... Obviously, it's one property. It's a very simple situation. Uh... We've gotten virtually no comments from DNR or FEMA about anything, including the design or how, how we put the operation maintenance manual together or any of this because it's all pretty straightforward. Um... It's just a matter of them moving on it and getting it done.
Good. Anyone else? All good? Okay. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate your... So if there are no other questions or comments, we have a resolution, uh... Number eighty-three that's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name. Know if you're opposed.
Alderman Brandle?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Crowe?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution number eighty-four, a resolution approving and adopting an emergency action plan and operation and maintenance plan for the Riverside Lofts Development Flood Protection System. Alderman Lars, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson, city of Jefferson, resolution number eighty-four. Now therefore be resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves and adopts an emergency action plan, an EAP, an operation and maintenance plan, an O-M-N-M, for the residence, uh... Riverside Lofts Development Flood Protection System, and further authorizes the city engineer to execute an agreement on behalf of the city of Jefferson. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Brandle. Any discussion? Questions or comments? Again, this is, uh... Tied to the one that we just approved. There are no other questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name. Know if you're opposed.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Crowe?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandle?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Number... Resolution number eighty-five, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract for the 2020 street improvements. Alderman Brandle, please.
Honorable Mayor Opperman, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, resolution number eighty-five. Whereas the city of Jefferson received three bids from contractors interested in completing the 2020 street improvements project, and whereas the value of the lowest bidder is included in the following table. Company, R.R. Walton and Company Limited of Whitewater. Base bid, South Marshall Avenue and East Milwaukee Street, $207,621.53. Alternate one, North Elizabeth Avenue, $440,829.80. Alternate two, Glenwood Court, $52,380.27. Alternate three, Wildwood Court, $42,349.99. And supplemental bid items of $14,439. Whereas Town and Country Engineering and city staff reviewed the project bid results and recommends award of the base bid and alternates two and three and the supplemental bid items for South Marshall Avenue, East Milwaukee Street, between South Main and South Center Avenue, Glenwood Court and Wildwood Court, while rejecting alternate one for Elizabeth Avenue. And whereas the overall bid scope of work included a combination of pulverizing, milling, grading, resurfacing pavement, as well as the installation of new water main and services to South Marshall Avenue only, and whereas of the total project bid amount of $316,790.79, the streets and storm sewer portion of this bid totals $217,704.79, with ninety-nine dollars... With $99,086 being associated with water main replacement. And whereas monies from the project have been allocated in the 2020 capital budget and storm sewer fund, 2020 Jefferson Utilities Budget, as well as a portion of funding being provided from LRIPMSILT funding. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that herein approves the R.R. Walton and Company Limited bid for 2020 street improvements in the amount of $316,790.79. Be it further resolved by the common council, the city administrators herein authorized and directed to execute any contract or document associated with the above action on behalf of the city of Jefferson upon the review and consent of the city attorney. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Miller. Any discussion?
This was approved unanimously by both Streets Committee and by the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Bill, you want to just give a kind of a thumbnail description of, um... Why we're admitting the portion that we are?
Sure. Um... Typically, the way we've done this in the past is, uh... Put several streets on the project, um... And then determine based on the, um... Actual bid amounts. Uh... We can pick and choose which streets we have based on priorities and budgets. Um... In this case, North Elizabeth Street, uh... Between Candice and Woolcock, um... Actually exceeded the base bid project. Um... So we aren't able to do all of the streets. Um... In this case, um... We're trying to, um... Taking care of the base bid, uh... Marshall and, uh... West... Or East Milwaukee Street, as well as, um... Cul-de-sacs over in Whispering Oaks that have not been touched in, uh... Probably thirty years. So, um... At this point, um... North Elizabeth would be, uh... Postponed for a future date, and, uh... These streets would be paved, um... As a summer construction, um... Certainly to be completed before Labor Day, hopefully early August, with minimal, uh... Minimal disturbance to the, uh... To the residents.
Thanks, Bill. And just, just to clarify, this is the stretch of Elizabeth Street only from Candice to Woolcock, correct?
Correct.
This doesn't affect the new section of Elizabeth Street that's being extended through the county highway shop, former county highway shop property, along by our new boat launch?
No, that, uh... That project has been awarded a previous city council meeting. Will be constructed this summer.
Right. Okay. Any questions, Bill?
One quick question. The funding being provided from LRIPMSILT, can you...
It's a local road improvement program. It's, uh... Funding that we submitted, um... Several years ago, um... Assigned this project to it. Uh... That's approximately $39,000 that, uh... And eligible expenses that will be, um... Reimbursed after, at the completion of the project by, uh... DoD.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none. All in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye. Sarah calls your name. Know if you're opposed.
Alderman Tully?
Aye.
Crowe?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandle?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution number eighty-six, a resolution amending the developers' agreement with the Schoolhouse Apartments Jefferson LLC. Alderman Miller, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. City of Jefferson, resolution number eighty-six. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein approves an amendment to the developers' agreement with Schoolhouse Apartments Jefferson LLC regarding a tax increment district number four municipal revenue bond obligation, and authorizes the mayor to execute said amendment on behalf of the city of Jefferson. I so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Brandle. And discussion? Tim, you want to give us the, uh... Explanation of this, please?
I'd be glad to. Um... I think this is, uh... Really a good thing. It, it regards tax increment district number four. That district was created by the city council in the year 2000. And, and tid number four is a single project tax increment district. It's the Schoolhouse Apartments. What is being proposed, uh... Tonight, uh... With the action on this resolution and then the next resolution is to abolish tax increment district number four approximately one year early. And then once that happens, uh... The, the valuation returns to the normal property tax rolls. And that's generally a good thing. In regard to the resolution that you will consider now, is back in, uh... 2000, the city put in place with the original developer of the project, um... A developers' agreement. And kind of the, the one big sole obligation of the city in terms of an expenditure is that it was gonna return a portion of the taxes generated on the building through what's called a, uh... Municipal Revenue Obligation Bond. And that was to occur throughout, um... The twenty years of, of the tax increment district. Well, we have enough money or cash or increment that's been generated so we can make the last payment early. Typically, it would be, uh... Paid, uh... The last payment would be in September of each year, so September of 2020. We wanna pay it now, and we want to adopt the second resolution, give it to the Department of Revenue by April 1. And then, this coming January 1 of 2021, the district would be abolished and then, uh... The tax base hits the normal tax rolls. So the only other thing that I can say is that I would expect that, um... At the end of the year, and you have to do an audit, so Baker Tilly will have to audit the district. But it seems likely that there will be some additional increment that's been generated and not been spent. I'm guessing that could be somewhere maybe around $90,000. That tax increment gets apportioned if we abolish the district amongst all the taxing jurisdictions based upon, um... Each's, um... Percentage of the overall tax bill. So, uh... If the school district has forty percent of the overall tax bill, it would be entitled to about forty percent of that surplus increment. Generally, it's a good thing if you don't have any uses to spend money in a district and you can close them out and bring the property back on the regular tax rolls. That, that, that's a good thing.
This was unanimously recommended by the Finance Committee also. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Nope. Good, good news. All right. All in favor of resolution number eighty-six, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name. Know if you're opposed.
Alderman Crowe?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandle?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution number eighty-seven, a resolution authorizing the termination of tax increment district number four. Alderman Crowe, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members and citizens. City of Res... Uh... Jefferson, resolution number eighty-seven. Resolution to terminate tax incremental district number four. Whereas the city created tax incremental district number four on April 18, 2000, and adopted a project plan in the same year. And whereas all tid four projects were completed in the prescribed allowed time. And whereas sufficient increment was collected as of the 2019 tax roll payable 2020 to cover tid four project costs. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Jefferson dissolve, terminate, tid four, and be it further resolved that the city clerk shall notify the Wisconsin Department of Revenue, DOR, within sixty days of this resolution or prior to the deadline of April 15th, 2020, whichever comes first, that the tid has been terminated. And be it further resolved that the city clerk shall sign the required DOR final accounting form, PE 223, agreeing on a date by which the city shall submit final accounting information to DOR. And be it further resolved that the city treasurer shall distribute any excess increment collected after providing for ongoing expenses of the tid to the affecting taxing districts with proportionate shares to be determined by the final audit by the city's auditors, Baker Tilly. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Byer. Any discussion? Once again, phase two of the last explanation. So... There's no other questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye as Sarah calls your name. Know if you're opposed.
Alderman Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandle?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Crowe?
Aye.
Good. Thank you. It's unanimous. Next, eight, resolution number eighty-eight, a resolution authorizing the moving of the April 7th meeting of the common council for the spring primary election. Alderwoman Byer, please.
City of Jefferson, resolution number eighty-eight. Whereas the city of Jefferson, common council typically meets on the first and third Tuesday of each month, in this case, April 7th, 2020, because of an election being that date, now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein moves the meeting day to April. Do we know what date we want to?
Do you want to read the sixth, and we'll have a discussion about that, please?
To April 6th, 2020. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
For discussion?
typically meets on the first and third Tuesday of each month, in this case, April 7, 2020, because of an election being that date, now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein moves the meeting day to April. Do we know what date we want to...
Do you want to read the sixth, and we'll have a discussion about that, please?
To April 6, 2020. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
For discussion? It moved and seconded. Can you please check your calendars and see? That is Easter week, so we have the option of moving it either forward one day or back a couple of days. But if we get too far back into it, Thursday is Monday, Thursday of Holy Week. So if it's not an inconvenience for Sarah and city staff, would Monday night work for everyone?
Monday would be brothers, and Wednesday for me.
Okay, Monday the 6th. Okay. All right. On a voice vote, all in favor of moving to Monday the 6th, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, it is Monday the 6th. Next, resolution number 89, a resolution authorizing the rejection of bids for the 2020 Riverwalk extension bid and authorization to rebid the project. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Jefferson, resolution number 89, rejection of bids for 2020 Riverwalk extension bid and authorization to rebid project. Whereas the City of Jefferson publicly opened bids for 2020 Riverwalk extension along the east bank of the Rock River between the Milwaukee Street and Racine Street bridges on February 20, 2020. And whereas, based on the bid amounts and the opinion of the city engineer, the bids should be rejected. Modifications be made to the design and the project be rebid. And now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that it herein rejects all bids submitted for the 2020 Riverwalk extension. Be it further resolved by the common council that it herein authorizes the city administrator to authorize rebidding the project with modifications recommended from the city engineer at the earliest possible date for construction in 2020. I would so move.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Byer. Any discussion?
This was approved unanimously by both the Streets Committee and the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Bill, you want to...
Sure. So this project, again, is a Riverwalk, boardwalk project extending from Milwaukee Street Bridge to the Racine Street Bridge, or the southern portion of the Riverside Lofts where the Riverwalk will run through the property at that point. This project, we received two bids. We had a budget for the project of $200,000. The two bids came